Welcome and thank you for joining us virtually for tonight's town council meeting. I am working to pull up the agenda, but I happen to know that the first note of order is to welcome everyone and then we will stand and say the pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer from Councilman Hams. So if everyone would give us a moment, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for another day you've given us the blessings of life and the cares. We thank you for everything you've done for us in keeping us safe through this time of turmoil. Praise the Lord to be with us tonight. Give us wisdom, conduct the town, and pray it in glory and honor for our God.
Thank you so much. As you, if you're calling in, you can't see, but we are all wearing our masks as we have mandated, but we are also socially distanced so that if any of our council members or our town manager is speaking, so that you will be able to hear, we will let down one side of the mask and then put it back on. So thank you for your patience with us and we will speak as clearly as possible and get through this meeting. We do have an aggressive schedule this evening and we will need to do a roll call because we are going to have a couple of our council members joining us via teleconference rather than here in person. So we want to make sure that everyone understands the rules that we're adhering to in this particular council meeting. So with that, council members, you have received the minutes from the June 11th Town Council Meeting and the minutes from the June 22nd Council Meeting. Do we have any changes, deletions, or additions to these councils?
I have a motion from Mr. Huntley for approval.
I get it.
And I have a second from Mr. Hams. Jamie, how do you vote?
I vote accept.
Larry?
Accept.
Ronnie?
Accept.
I accept. Lisa?
Accept.
And do we have Chris Moody on the line?
Yes, accept.
Thank you, Chris. And Trudy? Okay, all right. So those are the folks that we have in attendance at this moment. That was a unanimous vote with those attending for the acceptance of those two sets of meetings. Public comments. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the town clerk via mail, 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or email vverges@fortmillfc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. That is important to us. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to the town council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. We'll start tonight's meeting with presentation number one, the new town website. Our Assistant Town Manager, Chris Pettit, will be the person making that presentation. And again, this is a draft of our new town website. We knew it had issues that we wanted to address and they've been working, our staff has been working all but overtime to pull this together. Council will have an opportunity to review this and make comments and hopefully in a week we will have this rolled out to the public. So Chris, thank you for joining us. Looking forward to hearing what you got.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, tonight, we're really excited to unveil this new look and functionality for the town's new website. Town staff has been working really hard on this, so we're definitely excited to show it off. Several months ago, a new web design firm was selected that specializes in government websites and has lots of examples regionally and across the United States. We use that company's expertise, knowledge of best practices, along with our staff's expertise and history of working and listening to the public's needs and wants to design a site that we feel like will meet the needs of our citizens and town staff. So our objective was to put together a simple and clean website that contained a lot of information in an easy-to-find way. We wanted to put together a homepage where everything was generally accessible within one or two clicks, but also to have a homepage where it was easy to figure out what was going on in town, what our latest news was, what our most recent accomplishments were, et cetera. And we've been able to accomplish that with our new design. So without further ado, I will open up the draft of the town's new website. So we'll quickly walk through our new design, introduce some of the functionality that we will soon have, and then discuss our next steps with you leading up to the launch of our new site. So right off, you can definitely tell a big difference when you compare this site to what we currently have as our website. We've incorporated our new branding and logo and color palette into this design, which has given the site a much more modern look. Everything here is cleanly organized into a few different sections that will allow the users to interact and navigate through the site in different ways. So starting here on the homepage at the top, one of the first things you may notice on the page is a big header at the top labeled Town Alert. This alert bar will give us the opportunity to quickly share important or emergency-type information with our citizens and users of our website. Not only will this alert display to anyone that uses our website, but we'll be able to offer citizens the ability to sign up to receive email and text message alerts anytime we have staff post an alert to the website. So over time, if there's an important message or emergency that we need to push out information, we'll be able to do so using this functionality. And so not only will citizens see it when they log in to our website, but they'll also see it automatically via receiving a text message or email alert if they've signed up for that function. So we're definitely excited about that new communication tool that we'll have in the alert function. Moving on, we have a few different menus to navigate through the website, the various headings that you see here in this upper menu. Offer folks different ways to have information organized, but one of the neat things about this functionality is that you can actually find the same information in several of these menus. So for an example, let's say some folks knew that the Public Works Department handled our curbside collections. Well, they may navigate to the department's page and then find the Public Works Department to find information about curbside collections. That's one way that folks could find that. But other folks may not think of curbside collection as Public Works. They may think of that as just a service that we as a town offer. So they can also find that information by going to services and looking up curbside pickup. So our hope here is that information is more readily available to folks who may just think about how things should be organized differently. There may, there's no one right answer of how people should think about how to access certain information on the website. So we hope that this new way of thinking is going to offer folks a much more easy way to find that information when they go looking for it. And then when all else fails and you can't find what you're looking for, we do have a search bar over on the top right-hand side where folks can search for keywords, terms, or pages that they want to find. So we hope that this upper menu here is going to make things much more easily accessible and much more understanding of menu organization. Going down the page, we've got a nice new welcome screen with a new logo and some very nice background images of town. Continuing down, here we've got some additional menus. We've highlighted some of our most used or most important functionality to make it easily accessible. One of the most important ones that we want to highlight here is this notify me and alerts button. Similar to what we were talking about with alerts, this is where folks would go to sign up for those text message or email alerts on a variety of different topics. So they'll be able to come in, see a variety of different categories, so emergency alerts or parks and rec alerts, signing up for alerts on the town calendar, the town council meetings, or events calendars, or any of our boards and commissions. And they'll be able to sign up and automatically receive alerts when we post new agendas or post a new event in town, or again, have an emergency. So that's some functionality that we feel like is very important. It's a great tool that we'll be able to use. And so as we move forward, we'll be pushing a variety of communications for folks to go in there, sign up for these so that they can benefit from those automated alerts. Moving back to the homepage, if we continue scrolling down a little bit, we have an area that we call Town Spotlight. These are sort of our headline news. It's important news, town accomplishments, accomplishments, new events, et cetera. Again, sort of headline stories that we want to spotlight or focus on for longer periods of time. Then scrolling, continuing down below that, we have what we call the Community Update section. This feature is sort of a scrolling news feed of all the information that we would have in town that we'd be updating on the website. And this is also the section where we have our main town calendar where folks can come and look up town council meeting dates, events dates, and other important events and meetings that we have throughout the town. So like many other features on the website, folks can sign up to receive alerts if they want to keep up to date with town news or keep up to date with what's going on on town's main calendar. So I certainly can't show off everything, but I do want to show an internal page just to kind of go through the layout really quickly. So I'll scroll to one of our department pages. Again, our goal was to be clean, organized, and kind of be consistent throughout the entirety of the site so that folks could easily navigate through any page. So we tried to keep the page layout simple, short and sweet where we could, with every page containing contact information that's very easily accessible so that, you know, if you're on a page for whatever it may be, you can learn about whatever it is that you're looking at. But you also have the contact that if you need further information, if you need to continue to work with that particular topic, you automatically know who to contact and how to contact them. So, you know, again, our goal is to provide a lot of information, but also to make it easy for people to continue to work with us if needed, either calling or emailing us. So that's one thing that we've tried to be consistent with on every page. Again, we want to provide easily accessible information. So we frequently have questions on most of our pages. We have quick links where we can link people to related pages. And then each department's going to have a variety of sub-pages that they have additional information on. So overall, you know, it's clean and easy. It's organized to give a lot of information in an easily accessible way. There's many other things on the website. The website has a bid portal where folks can, again, subscribe to get notifications for any bids that we post. So vendors can easily have accessibility to that information. Hopefully, that'll drive an increase in the number of bids that we receive and the town can save some money through the procurement process because of this new website and then making our bid process information much more readily available. So we're really excited about the things this webpage can offer. You know, one additional function that it's a lot easier than our, their old website used to be is we can take entire processes and complete it through the website. So an example being, if someone wants to submit a Freedom of Information Act request, previously, we would have the application form on the website and people would have to print it off or email it to us, what have you. But with our new website, we have the functionality of folks can just complete that application form on the website and it automatically would get emailed to the appropriate staff member to handle and process that request. So the functionality there is used on a variety of pages. So it's a really nice tool that staff now has in our toolbox to, again, connect with the public and make things easier and more efficient on both sides of the public and staff. So again, we're really excited about the design and this new functionality that we have. But, you know, that is a very quick overview of our website. But before I answer any questions, I do just want to kind of note, you know, we're not done yet. We're probably 85, 90% done. But following tonight's meeting, we'll provide town council with a link to access the site, play around in it. And, you know, if you see anything that you would like to comment on or have us tweak, just please let us know. Staff will be working behind the scenes to complete and get the site up to 100% completed this week. And we are scheduled for a public launch next Monday, July 20th, around 11:00 a.m. One thing I will note is that there will be a time during our switch over to the new site where our website will be inaccessible to the public. It may take upwards of an hour. We're hoping for 15 minutes, but it may take upwards of an hour to go through that process and have the new website live. So, you know, we'll be sure to, this week, be pushing out a lot of information to folks, to the citizens, so they know kind of what's coming, what new functionality we have, what to expect. And just let them know overall, they'll be seeing something different when they log into the website that may take some time to get used to, but definitely over time, we feel like folks will find the experience on the new website much more enjoyable and much more easy to use. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or kind of look at some different things on the website if you'd like. But that is my presentation.
I personally, given this is the first time we've had an opportunity to take a look at it, I'm excited that we finally are getting through with one area of communication that's critical to all of us. So I think I just need a little bit of time to play with it and read through it and, you know, provide some feedback, but appreciate the really hard work and the opportunity to have a week to look it over. Council members, do you have any comments or concerns that need to be expressed to Chris?
Is that Town Alert bar going to stay there even though there's no alerts to put out? Or does it come up when there are alerts to note?
Jamie, you might need to face the phone when you do.
The alert bar only displays when there is an active alert. We've turned it on for the purpose of this presentation, but typically, we hope there's no alerts, you know, displayed most of the time. So it would not be visible.
You all blew up above there then?
He's asking with the bars.
I'm sorry.
In a time of no.
No, the entire gray bar goes away. So you just, it's not even something that you would see.
Looking good.
Chris, as far as the create an account and the sign in, I'm assuming that's for everyone so they can get in there to pay bills now and be able to do so online. And that is the icon at the bottom of the page.
The create an account, it allows you to, for example, like on some of the forms and documents that you may submit through the website, if you create an account, it'll automatically populate some of your contact information. But for the average citizen, just interacting with the website, there's no need really to create an account. Everything's accessible without an account. The only time, I guess the big thing is you do need to sign up for the notifications and alerts. But besides that, there's not too terribly much benefit in creating an account or need to create an account. It's all generally accessible without logging into the website.
And another question I had, is there a place on the website where we'll be talking about the city limits so that somebody can easily determine if their address is in the town limits or not?
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, we'll have all the information of kind of how to figure out if you're in the town limits, easily accessible on the website, because that certainly is a question that we get a lot of the time. So we'll provide folks with some key indicators of whether or not they're in town to hopefully answer that question for a lot of folks.
Perfect. And then my last one, are we going to have an automatic survey pop-up as users are using this for the foreseeable future so we'll know of any opportunities for improvements or any voids we may have?
I don't think we can have an automatic pop-up just generally come up when folks go to the website, but we can have a spotlight story, you know, introducing the new website to us and trying to gain feedback through a survey that way. But I don't think we can do an automated pop-up anytime someone goes to the website. But we will certainly look into that, but we can definitely have some sort of functionality clearly on the main page that we can request feedback.
Yeah, I certainly think since we didn't do a survey before we started the process that we need to do it afterwards to provide people, users, whether they're in the town limits or not, any users, the opportunity to comment on it. We certainly want the feedback and just need to be able to provide a portal for them to do so, even if it does cost a little bit for a survey feature on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further comments that you may have, be sure to give them in our week of review to Chris or Chris. Jamie, you had a comment?
No.
Are you good? Okay. Any further comments in regards to presentation number one? All right. Hearing none, we'll move into old business items. Welcome, Trudy, to our meeting. Thank you for being here. Old business item number one, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and filing of a quitclaim deed for a platted right-of-way easement, Davy Breen. Davy, I need a motion and then we can get comments from Davy.
I'm making a motion to accept old business item number one.
I've got a motion for Mr. Shirey and a second for Mr. Hams. Davy, has anything changed since the last time we reviewed this?
It hasn't changed. It's the same as it was on the first round, first reading.
Okay. Do we have any questions in regards to this particular item on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to accept. And second, Lisa, how do you vote?
To approve.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
Jamie Shirey?
Approve.
Larry Huntley?
Approve.
Trudy Heinthal?
Approve.
Ronnie Hams?
Approve.
And so do I. That's a unanimous approval for this particular item. I hope that's helpful, Virginia. All right. We will move to new business items. New business item number one, bid award for Fort Mill lift station improvement for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, GMC, project number 190044. Greg Rushing is our staff expert for this.
I can make a statement, business item number one.
Right. I've got a motion for Mr. Shirey and a second from Mr. Hams. Greg, what you got for us?
I just want to check in, make sure everybody can hear me.
We can.
All right, good deal. I've attached a memorandum and the actual bid recommendation from GMC Engineering. That's Goodwin Mills in Kwood. Their office is located out of Greenville, and they've been working on us very well with this project. We received five bids on July 2nd. Unfortunately, they were high. Low bid was 1.130313 and 75 cents, and the engineer's estimate was 952241. As you recall, this is one of our REA grants for $500,000. So our commitment initial was 452 and change, 452,000 and change. And now that commitment will be 6331375. My guess is that during the engineer's estimate, we did not account for COVID very well and its impacts on our project, and probably a little bit of inexperience in our market for GMC, probably didn't estimate the sheer demand for contractors in the area. Regardless, the overage, and if Shante is on, I'll let her speak to that. She has stated that we do have that in our reserve utility funds to cover. We also don't particularly want to lose our REA grant. But also, in reviewing the bids, we definitely see some savings that we can work on ourselves, and we'll probably have a change order immediately after signing any contracts. That being said, the low bid was by AAA Utility out of Columbia, and the current bid was 1,130,31375. Not sure if you recall the scope of the project, but we're basically rebuilding a small station at Charlotte Highway, almost to the river where the bridge is closed now. And the other is Poplar. How can I say this? It's way back in the woods, almost on the Springs property. We actually had to get it deeded over to us. One of the most troublesome stations we have in terms of overflow and operation, and we hope this project will take care of that all the way up through the White Grove neighborhood. Any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any questions for Greg?
Can I correct you at Old Nation Road, Charlotte Highway?
I can only comment that that's the name of the pump station.
It was Charlotte Highway when I was a kid.
Yeah, and Poplar Street Pump Station is nowhere near Poplar Street either.
I was wondering.
We'll basically show you the age of both stations.
How old are the current stations, Greg?
I do not know, honestly. We have been band-aiding Charlotte Highway for a long time, and I think the original station construction was probably 70s or 80s. And then Poplar, we've been improving occasionally, and we have two wet wells, and I could go into it all. We have relatively new generator there. But I think the last one would be around the 10 or 15 year, and that was a Band-Aid improvement at Poplar.
Yeah, I would love to ask you. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's pre-1970. And Poplar Street was there when Poplar Street was the last street in the neighborhood. So it was before Halet, Gage, and Valley. So it was pre-1970.
There's actually an old treatment facility at the Charlotte Highway where at one point it was treated and released into that stream. It's a very old site.
It's the oldest station we have.
And I do think it's important to note that in our water and sewer system, you know, there were times that the town of Fort Mill was not the only provider. And those were times that we didn't have record-keeping the way that we are able to today. So I think that, you know, we're able to provide service at the level that we do. It's just an absolute attribute to the folks that run our systems and our employees. So thank you so much, Greg, and all the employees that work so hard to keep us in water and sewer.
Greg, how much more time do we have on grants?
I don't know that for sure. I do know that should we let this extend past a year, it affects our ability to apply for more. And then it also affects our ability to get the grants if we show we are not progressing on them.
Yeah, they don't like to give them out and then they haven't used.
That's money somebody else could have if you're not running to do them. Any further questions for Greg? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve, and we have a second for that.
I'm sorry, I did have a quick question. Was trying to get in. Greg, what is the timing for the project starting and then completion that we're looking for in this? And how long lasts once it's in place?
We always design to last over 20 years. We're not planning on a lot of growth for these two stations, so we should have the sizing correct. However, we are trying a different construction or a different type of pump station. It is a suction lift where all the machinery is located outside of the wet well. Should we need to improve or add some extra capacity, we basically shim the pumps, and the pumps being right on top of the wet well. It's a relatively easy operation. The construction should start within a month, certainly. But the lead time on the pump stations itself, it's pretty much a package pump station, will be several months. So right now, I would guess we're in the six to eight month range. But the pumps are fairly standard. We just have to shim them correctly and build a station around them. So that shouldn't be too much of a problem. I don't think the delivery's been affected by the COVID epidemic.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Any further questions? Hearing none. Chris Moody, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Approve.
Jamie Shirey?
Approve.
Larry Huntley?
Approve.
Trudy Heinthal?
Approve.
Ronnie Hales?
Approve.
And I also will approve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. We'll move to the next section of our agenda. In light of our council meetings not being able safely to entertain an audience with our virtual meetings for several months now, we have accepted written comments that we would have accepted if anyone were sitting in our audience, they would get three minutes. We do ask that anyone that submits a comment include their address. Tonight, we will be reading some of these, even though an address was not included. But I would like, as we are working as hard as we can to adjust to ensuring that all information and communication is continued in this time of a pandemic, please do all possible to submit and do what you can. So Davy, do you want to alternate reading those? You want to start? Davy and I will alternate. It's a handful. We have 11 of them, and some of them are lengthy. Again, if you were here in person to provide this, which I prefer, you would be given three minutes' time. We typically do not respond. If there's anything that comes from these messages that there's an answer to, we certainly would get that. But we will all absorb the information that has been provided to us through the information context. So Davy, if you'll go first.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The first letter or public comment is from Kevin Henderson. He resides at 104 Loughlin Drive in Fort Mill. His public comment states, "Hi, Mayor Savage and Town Council members. My name is Kevin Henderson. My wife, Yolanda, and I lived in Fort Mill for 14 years at 104 Loughlin Drive, 29715, in Ward Number Two, Councilman Hales. I am a veteran of the U.S. Navy. The purpose of this email is to express my extreme displeasure with the name Confederate Street and Confederate Park. The Confederacy seceded from America in order to defend their way of life, which was predicated on the enslavement and oppression of my ancestors. The Confederacy was the antithesis to supposed American ideals of democracy, rights, liberty, opportunity, and equality. In fact, the Vice President of the Confederacy, Alexander Stephens, made it clear that the Confederate cause was about maintaining slavery and white supremacy. He said in his now-famous cornerstone speech that the Confederacy's cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to the superior race, is its natural and normal condition. This, our new government, is the first in the history of the world based upon the great physical, philosophical, and moral truth. Given the above, direct quote, historical context, and systemic racism we currently see on full display, i.e., the lynching of George Floyd by a police officer, it is very disheartening to live in Fort Mill and pay taxes in support of any celebration honoring the traitors of the Confederacy. It is also troubling that the Police Department is located on Confederate Street, period. Fort Mill prides itself on being a seemingly progressive town slash city. The town's motto is friendly and progressive. Celebrating the Confederacy is counter to the progressive narrative and motto. I emailed under separate cover the mayor and individual council members over a week ago. The only responses I received were from Mayor Savage and Councilmember Huntley. The responses were tongue-deaf and anemic at best, and neither spake to the core reason of my email. There are only two sides in this discussion slash debate. Number one, justice, equity, equality, and anti-racism. Number two, racism, oppression, white supremacy, injustice, and equality. I asked the mayor and the board which side represents the friendly and progressive motto of Fort Mill. In short, there is truly only one side. Fort Mill must take down any names or monuments to celebrate racism and oppression. I strongly urge you and the Town Council to take the action to remove these un-America symbols from our town. If the Confederacy hadn't won, I would still be in bondage and my humanity would be completely stripped. I eagerly await your action. Stand fastly. I remain Kevin Henderson."
Let it be known, too, that we are reading directly from what was received. We do not make changes, additions, or deletions. Number two, hello, my name is Megan Drew and reside at 4056 Harbin Way, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, and I would like this placed in public comment for the Monday meeting. Will the town be asking our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act and let the town of Fort Mill, not legislators who can't find Fort Mill on a map, to have final say over our monuments and street names? Do you think having streets named for the famous Klansmen like Nathan Bedford Forrest and other non-locals famous for their racist views will help attract future businesses to the town? Are you willing to place labels next to the monuments in Confederate Park to contextualize them for the modern era? Do you think renaming the street we named after John Wilkes Booth, modern Tom Hall Street, was a bad decision, and how that decision is different from renaming streets today? Do you care that people from elsewhere think our statues and streets make our town one of the biggest monuments to white supremacy anywhere in the world? Do you think ignoring this problem will make it go away? Thank you. I look forward to your response. Megan Drew.
Number three, Mayor. This is from Michelle Killian. She resides at 119 Sunny's Way in Fort Mill. Public comment is, hello, my name is Michelle Killian. I live at 119 Sunny's Way in Fort Mill, along with my husband and two teenagers. Will our town be asking our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act so that our town can have final say over our monuments and street names? When we have family and friends visit, we intentionally try to avoid Confederate monuments. Frankly, it's an embarrassment that our town still has lasting signs of white supremacy. Are you aware of how these monuments make our town look to visitors? Please consider these questions as they are directly linked to any success we hope to have financially or otherwise as we move into the future. Best regards, Michelle Killian.
Public comment number four. As a resident of the town of Fort Mill, I'm writing to express my extreme disappointment in how the council has handled this new mask ordinance. The main reason why I'm disappointed is in the way it was passed. There was no notice, or at least minimal notice, and it was passed almost secretly. At least Rock Hill had the integrity to announce that it would be discussed and welcomed public opinion on it. Fort Mill basically bypassed public comment or opinion on this. I'm very upset, especially since I was involved in the campaigns for a few of you during the last election. I won't be making that mistake again. It is very clear that you do not respect the opinions or freedoms of your constituents. I moved to Fort Mill, South Carolina, instead of Charlotte because I believe this town and state respected conservative values. However, I am quickly realizing that liberty is a farce and that the local government will take every opportunity to unilaterally take away freedom. On a secondary note, I absolutely disagree with the mask ordinances. At the very minimum, the science surrounding them is debated. There is no consensus on masks. This is a political statement and nothing more. My doctor and I are friends, and even she has said there is a hostile debate even in the medical community. We are pushing something that is highly debated on the entire population of residents. Even the president's own press secretary has said that the increased cases are due to increased testing. That just makes sense. Deaths are down. When do we get to take the masks off? When is it gone? It will never be gone. When the death rate is 1%, we are already there. The CDC is estimating true death rate is below 1%. The Association of American Physicians and Surgeons even says that masks just provide a false sense of security at best. There is a link here that I'm not going to read because it wouldn't make any sense to anyone, but it is a AAPSOLINE.org on masks. This is completely political. It is unacceptable. Before you assume I don't know what I am talking about, also understand this. My husband has COVID. He had it very badly, and there were moments we were very scared. I can see what a bad case of it can do, yet masks didn't protect him and won't protect anyone else. I'm tired of elected officials cowering to those that are fearful over this. Yes, COVID can be dangerous for people. I have seen it firsthand. But so can many other illnesses. It has a 99% survival rate, if not higher. Death rates are down. The death rate is down, yet we are adding new restrictions. I'm very disappointed as a member of this community and highly disappointed in the council. Lindsey Portugal.
The next one comes from Tracy Simpson, who resides at 114 Sharon View Street, Fort Mill. I am a resident of Fort Mill and employee of LPL Financial. I am writing to let the Town Council know it is my belief we are in a monument in our nation's history, in a moment, excuse me, in our nation's history, where we are being asked to seize the opportunity to make change for the better. We know the whitewashed story of the lost cause and the effective measures put in place by the daughters of the Confederacy. But the time is long overdue to speak the truth about our nation's history. We are a country that has tremendous wealth today, in large part because it was built on the backs of the free labor of slaves. It is long past time to stop glorifying the distorted memory of the slave owners and start listening to and understanding the real-life fear and pain of the descendants of the slaves who exist in our town today. Confederate monuments and street names that honor Klansmen are violent reminders of oppression. Fort Mill cannot attract businesses with diverse workforces and growth if we maintain a backwards mindset. And as a taxpayer, I am personally opposed to my dollars funding the upkeep of the grounds and monuments in Confederate Park, a place that serves as a low-level threat to my neighbors of color. My questions to the Town Council are this. Will you be voting to overturn the Heritage Act so we can take progress into our own hands the right way? What are your specific plans to address the Faithful Slaves Monument, the name of Confederate Park and glorification of it, the names of the following streets, Confederate, Calhoun, Lee, Jackson, Sidney Johnson, Morgan, Forrest, and Leonidas? Or Leondas? What specific actions are you taking towards progress similar to what Fort Mill did in 1922 when we renamed John Wilkes Booth Street to Tom Hall Street? Thank you.
Public comment number six, Kelsey Carter of 1148 Market Street. I am sharing this comment because of my desire to see the names of Confederate Park, the street names related to Confederates, and a KKK leader and a monument that obscures the reality of slavery removed from places of honor in our town. Some of you may feel that the desire to remove these names and monument is only a result of the recent events around our nation. This is not so. I personally have been appalled by their presence since I was old enough to understand what they were. Everyone I have talked to has felt revulsion for them as well. The only effort the recent events have had is to reveal how many of us there are. They have given us the momentum to come together and to urge that these vestiges of the dark past remain in the proper context of history, that is to say, not in places of honor. In light of this, I ask that you, one, ask our state legislative delegation to overturn the Heritage Act, thereby giving the town of Fort Mill agency to deal with its own manners. Number two, place labels next to the monuments in Confederate Park to give more historical context to their presence. The Faithful Slaves Monument, were it to stay, would require extensive background to explain the false lost cause ideology behind the monument's erection. Three, change the names of the following streets, Confederate, Calhoun, Lee, Jackson, Sidney Johnson, Morgan, Forrest, and Leondas. Four, change the name of Confederate Park. I've already seen two reactions to our request. These acts are not worth doing as they will not change hearts and minds, and b, our hands are tied by the Heritage Act. My response to the first is this, of course it will not, but it is good as any place to start. The fact that you acknowledge that there still exists racial hatred means that we have work to do that we have been putting off. To the last I say, you can always try. We expect that of you. Regards, Kelsey Kate.
Okay, next one. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ahmad. I live within the city limits of Fort Mill in the Savannah subdivision of Inzuroe. I believe it is time to address the embarrassing issue of the glorification of the Confederacy and parks and street names. It is very unwelcoming and not representative of the true spirit of this town. Thank you for your efforts to address the situation. Respectfully, Jennifer.
Public comment number eight is from Nicole Lovell-Creech at 202 Fairway Drive. I'm writing to you regarding some issues that have been facing our town for some time but have not been adequately addressed or corrected. The first issue that I'm concerned about is the fact that Confederate memorials still hold a prominent place in downtown. These archaic statues honoring Confederate soldiers, Confederate women, catibas who fought for the Confederacy, and most disturbingly, the faithful slaves, is inconscionable in 2020. The town even has them illuminated at night. They convey a message of outdated veneration for a very painful and treasonous part of our local history. It does not present a progressive face to residents or visitors to our town. As a course of action, I would ask that the town remove these monuments based on the precedent of the Tom Hall Street name change. That seems the most sensible and convenient route. If that more expedient solution is not palatable, I would ask that you convey our desire to remove them by voting to overturn the Heritage Act. In addition, I believe it is time that we regulate the names of streets that not only speak to the Confederate history but to the horrific terrorism of the KKK. This is a true embarrassment to our town. The street names of Confederate, Forrest, Lee, Jackson, Calhoun, Sidney Johnson, Morgan, and Leondas should all be changed to reflect a town that honors the United States and not the Confederacy. I would ask that you also consider that even Robert E. Lee stood against such memorial, saying it was wise, quote, "not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the examples of those nations who endeavor to obliterate the marks of civil strife, to commit to oblivion the feelings and gender." I love our town. I want it to show the world that it is a place of empathy, unity, and that we have our eyes and hearts set on the future, not the past.
Mayor, the next one comes from Daniel Khan, C.O.A.N. Right off, I do not see an address, but his public comment is, "I'm submitting this public comment favoring removal of monuments supportive of the Confederacy or slavery from public grounds and renaming public streets named after those who supported the Confederacy or slavery. I am a South Carolina native. I went to high school in Greenville, went to college in Charleston, and volunteered as a reserve deputy in Dorchester County during that time. And worked as a police officer in Charleston and a deputy sheriff in Greenville after graduating from college. I've also worked as a counterintelligence and counterterrorism professional at the FBI. I am now an attorney, and I have lived in the Oakland Point neighborhood in Fort Mill almost two years ago now. As a South Carolina native, I am all too aware of the state's checkered past when it comes frankly to our inability to be on the right side of history on racial issues, from being the first state to succeed from the Union and start the Civil War to Senator Strong Thurmond's steel-record filibuster in opposition to the Civil Rights Act, to the battle over whether to bring the Confederate flag down from the State House dome and our inability to take it off of State House grounds. At long last, we are beginning to witness a sea of change in the South when it comes to the approach to the Confederacy and monuments that reflect a positive view of slavery and the Confederacy. Mississippi has voted to remove the Confederate Battle Cross from its state flag. Monuments dedicated to the Confederacy have been removed from public grounds or buildings currently named after Confederate leaders or buildings currently named after Confederate leaders will be renamed in each of Richmond, Virginia, Louisville, Kentucky, Charleston, South Carolina, Charleston, West Virginia, Jacksonville, Florida. South Carolina, Charleston, West Virginia, Jacksonville, Florida, Birmingham, Alabama, Alexandria, Virginia, Mobile, Alabama, and Frankfort, Kentucky, as well as the University of Alabama. Note that these locations, almost all of which were in the deep South, historically have been staunchly protective of a positive Confederate memory. It seems that they have now recognized their errors and the pain they have caused, and they are taking concrete action to begin to make it right. This is Fort Mill's opportunity to be full once among those who are taking swift action on the right side of history. We need to take down monuments glorifying Confederacy or perpetuating racism. We need to rename streets that are named after those who advocated for the Confederacy or slavery. To be clear, I am not advocating, as some would say, to erase history or rewrite history. To the contrary, I advocate today to put the Confederacy in proper context. For making no mistake, the Confederate heritage is one of treason and treachery, of inequality and murder, of insurrection, division, enslavement, and violence. While it is certainly something to be taught and remembered, it is frankly nothing of which to be proud. Southerners being proud of a Confederate heritage is not all that different from a German being proud of Nazi heritage. There is a reason you don't see Germans being proud of their Nazi past. Similarly, there is a reason you don't see monuments to Nazis in Germany. Of course, I'm not equating Confederates to Nazis, but I am suggesting that it is past time to start recognizing Confederacy for exactly what it was and having our public grounds reflect that historical context in a way that does not glorify its horrible, misguided positions. It's also important to consider the timing of the erection of these monuments and naming of these streets. These occurred at times when, after the Civil War and the emancipation of slaves, the white South was continuing to make a concerted effort to continue to deny black people their rights, from the Jim Crow era to the opposition of the Civil Rights Movement. The Confederate flag wasn't put atop the State House building until 1961, right in the middle of the Civil Rights Movement. In my mind at least, to say these things were done as part of some benign effort to preserve some non-racist, non-treacherous Confederate heritage of states' rights or personal freedom is ignorant and misguided at best, but more likely is a downright misinterpretation. These were done with the express intent to intimidate and demean black people and assert the superiority of white people. To be clear, I'm not suggesting that we erase every concept of the Confederacy from our public discourse. To the contrary, it is important that we teach our youth about it, in part so that they understand our American history and in part so that it never happens again. So while we should definitely take these monuments down from public spaces and rename streets that are named after those who supported slavery and the Confederacy, we should also put those monuments and that information in a museum where a historical context is apparent. To the extent that the state Heritage Act might prohibit the town from acting unilaterally to do these things, it is not enough for this council to throw its hands up and say, "Sorry, but state law prohibits us from doing anything." So go talk to your state representative. Rather, it is incumbent upon this council to lobby the legislature as well. And while we're talking about responsibility, it is your job as the councilperson not to do out question what some of your constituency asked or what might best benefit your reelection prospect, but to do what is right for this town. To bar from the line of the musical Hamilton, history has its eyes on us right now, and to add to that line, history will judge us harshly if we continue to stay on the wrong side of it. In particular, when it's now, it is so obviously the wrong side. Now is the time finally to be on the right side. Additionally, in case doing what is morally and ethically right is not sufficient, please let me point out that businesses are increasingly paying attention to social issues and directing business decisions based on them, so much so that there is a name for it, corporate social responsibility. Recall that there was a huge business backlash against North Carolina's bathroom bill and that the state's economy losses as a result were estimated to be in the billions of dollars. Businesses were so invested in being able to attract talented employees that they took on the trouble and expense of filing an amicus brief in Supreme Court case on immigration. NASCAR has banned the Confederate flag from its events. Walmart is no longer selling it. The list goes on. If we fail to address this issue properly here and now, then it is no understatement to say that we risk the economic future of this town. It is no understatement to say that this body will have been through its inaction, complicit and in the perpetuation, excuse me, of racism and inequality. And as a result, it is no understatement to say that this body will have dis served its own townspeople yet again. I implore you, stand up for justice, stand up for equality, stand up for progress, and stand up for the economic and general well-being of this community. Our fate is in your hands, and history has its eyes on you. Respectfully, Daniel Khan.
Public comment number 10. It is from Al Rogat, 1006 Crest Haven Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715. What happened to the minutes of the meeting on July 6, 2020? Shouldn't they be here for approval along with the June 11th and 22nd minutes? In reviewing the new face covering ordinance, I checked all over the internet, and I know it is not necessarily all true, and found nothing for any religion prohibiting face covering, so I would love to know the reason for that exception. If establishments are not required to enforce the ordinance inside their own establishment, what good is the ordinance? How will the rest of the public be safely protected? If the county approves a stricter regulation on July 20th, will it take precedence over the town one? Thanks for bringing back the farmer's market. Thank you. P.S. I am watching if the link works.
All right, and the last one, Mayor. Comes from Suzanne McCaskill, who is a Fort Mill resident. Thank you, Fort Mill Town Council members, for serving during a time in what will likely be called one of the most difficult times in modern history. I understand there are many Fort Mill residents with valid concerns and opinions, but very few have the need perspective and background from which I make this statement. Wear your mask. COVID-19 is a respiratory disease for which we have no immediate cure, no long-term solution, and we barely have basic knowledge of how it infects our population. Current drug therapies are few, and in overwhelmed healthcare settings, our life-saving abilities and long-term care options are even fewer. The vaccine for which we tire normalcy to is in the works, but is currently an unknown variable. With long-term health issues now becoming more widely apparent, e.g., M I S C dash C in children, blood clotting or strokes, lingering neurological and pulmonary problems, heart and liver damage, et cetera, preventative or mitigation measures should not be taken lightly. Many of these long-term health issues are just now being recognized in studies. What about the ones we don't know about? Biologists, mathematicians, think tank geniuses, financial experts, and all kinds of people are trying to give advice and influence the policies and public opinion surrounding this pandemic. I earned a master's degree in public health and worked at CDC, so maybe that makes me a little biased in terms of basing my opinion on the knowledge of the public health experts. To me, public health was always a way to look forward through data to understand how populations and diseases react in real-world scenarios. No other industry, academic focus, genius billionaire has the depth of experience in studying disease across populations, especially not with worldwide pandemics. I think we are all well aware of the economic hardships, strain, and uncertainty COVID-19 has caused. This is not lost on deaf ears. When analyzing public health data, socioeconomic factors and other adjustments are taken into consideration while being weighed against the short and long-term health impacts across a population. Making the final policy decision is left up to the folks like you as the town council members. You have to balance all of the information and move forward in the most efficient manner. Here's my best analogy for you. Wearing a mask is like buying insurance, wearing a seatbelt, putting on sunscreen, flash bug spray, or placing your newborn on their back to sleep. You may not need it, and sometimes it's hard to justify the cost method process for doing it. It may not work 100%, but do you want to be caught without it in the end if it did help? No matter how hard we try, this disease will spread, but at least we can use the most up-to-date knowledge of current experts to slow it down. Hopefully, wearing a mask is a small effort that will give science a chance to catch up with new therapies, vaccines, and at least attempt to prevent the healthcare system from getting overwhelmed. I support the town council's efforts to reduce the spread of the virus by requiring masks indoors and in places where social distancing cannot be maintained. Thank you for keeping this a priority in our community. Respectfully, Suzanne McCaskill.
Okay. So 11 public comments, all read as were submitted. I think it's, we don't respond, but I think it is worthy of saying that as a council, we receive a number of emails and contacts, not just emails, not just Facebook messages, but phone calls and contacts from people within our community. We share those with each other, and we all take every comment into consideration. Some of the ones that are submitted, however, are unkind, to say the least. I don't respond to those that are ugly in nature. I don't think it is productive. We do gather input. We are working towards what might this council be able to do. We do not lean on the Heritage Act as a crutch. It is a law, and in our taking a seat on this council and anyone else that would be interested in doing so, or being mayor, you too would have to be sworn in that you will follow the laws as they are written and provided to you, so help you God. So we have reviewed the Heritage Act. We have received and continued to receive legal advice on these issues. We have begun reaching out and talking to members of our community, and at some point hope that we will make a decision on what can be done legally and successfully within our community. The mask issue was one that we did have a very short and quick meeting. We had talked about it previous. We saw that other communities around us were considering, but most of all, this was not a political decision. This council is a nonpartisan council. You can certainly go to the voting booth and vote your will, but we do not wear a partisan badge as we sit on this bench. This decision was because the numbers in 29715 and 29708 literally more than doubled in a very short period of time. One may ask, well, isn't that because of testing? Yeah, it is, but it's also because the virus is out there. We've begun to hear of neighbors and friends and family members that have contracted this virus. Not everybody has an easy time with it, and I certainly would not want to wish that conveyance from me to anyone or nor anyone to us. So we made this decision based on public health and safety, which is our first mission statement as a council. The ordinance is for 30 days. We certainly continue to receive comments, and we'll take that into consideration and pray for that our numbers will slow down a little bit. South Carolina's notoriety certainly hasn't been a happy thing, and I just want everyone to be as safe as possible and as healthy as possible. So whereas we're in a pandemic like everyone else, that there isn't a path or a win-loss record to be had and looked at, we're doing our dead-level best to put our fellow constituents first. Anybody else have a comment that they would like to make from council?
I would like to say that I appreciate the comments that people that took trouble to write without agreeing with them or not. But hopefully, we will, particularly on the mask, come up with the right decision. The same situation may be changing in the 31 days after the approval of when it comes to the end, if we can have a different outlook, we'll just have to wait and see.
Anyone else with a comment they would like to make at this point in time?
I love that our public sends us emails and letters and phone calls and texts. I mean, if I sat and listened to somebody who agreed with me 24 hours a day in my head, I would not be able to do my job like I'm supposed to. I mean, I try to at every point listen to all sides of the story so that we can come up with the best decision. And as for the masks, I mean, if we weren't right here on the border, and every time I look out my door, I see license plates from every state in a six-state radius, I really wouldn't sweat it, but it's not just our constituent. I mean, we have all these different people coming in here and putting all of us at risk. I mean, I wish I could put a bubble over it, but I've also talked to some of my friends down in Bothell County, and they passed their mask ordinance eight days ago, and their scale has flattened. As the rest of the state has gone up, they have flattened. So I hope that's what we have. And as I always say, I hope this winds up being nothing. I hope we overreacted, but I had much rather played on the side of caution than not, because trust me, if we wound up with a thousand cases in our little town, we would not recover. And the people like to play these number games of 1%. 1% of 7,000 people, that would be a monkey regimen could not recover from.
Any further comments? Chris Moody, Lisa, I know you're not sitting here with us, so I can't look you in the eye, but you're welcome to make comments as you speak, Bill. Hearing none, we will move forward with information discussion item number two, tennis court resurfacing project, Davey Brune.
Thank you, Mayor. We are, the staff is bringing back some information to council tonight during this portion of the meeting. I'd like to give a little bit of history on these tennis courts. Town of Fort Mill, these tennis courts were originally with the Leroy Springs Recreation Complex. Two years ago, the town took over that site. The YMCA is operating out of that site, the building itself, but the tennis courts have remained public courts for, during this timeframe. And there had been some discussion, there had been renovations to the courts over the years, just kind of what we would call consider Band-Aid to the courts, filling in some cracks, repainting the court itself, the surface as well, trying to get out. But they're in a condition now that they can no longer be repaired. The cracks have widened to the point where they're beyond repair on several of the courts. So back in the fall, the staff sent out advertised and received bids for resurfacing tennis courts in their current location. If you know, there are six courts located right behind the gymnasium at the YMCA complex. Those bids came back, the lowest bid at a three-inch base was $260,006. That was in November. We had what we considered an early winter, so the companies were not ready to come out and do repairs and resurfacing of the entire project or renovations during the winter months. So they wanted to put it off to the springtime, which we were fine with that at the time. During that timeframe, staff worked with ESP and associates about trying to utilize as much space as possible out at the YMCA complex, and there was some realignment where there was at least a rendering provided, where you could do some realignment of four of the tennis courts and have a possible future sites for, that could be used for different things, one being maybe a new gymnasium, a multipurpose field, a small one for the daycare on the site, and just small athletic events. During that timeframe, COVID hit also, and so it has put us well, I would say, behind the eight ball now. The tennis courts are still there, they're still in their same condition, but in a previous meeting, we, staff was asked to go back and take the new rendering and get ballpark ideas or quotes for realigning the tennis courts, leaving for the courts in their current location. in their current locations, and then adding for new courts, making a straight line, if you will, of the courts. Staff did that. We took the lowest bidder from the fall and brought them out to review the site, and they provided us a new proposal. In order to do that, they put in a bid of $384,032. Again, that would be resurfacing four courts in their current location, not really doing any maintenance work to the current fences that are surrounding them. They would install or construct and install four new courts, add new fencing for those courts for that price. So what that does is that would get us eight courts, but we would still not, the price does not include any restroom facilities, changing facilities, or office space, or maybe even some storage for the site. But that is the price that they came back with. Again, staff just wanted to get this in front of you, make you aware of it, give you time to think about it. A decision is not mandatory tonight. There's really, we just wanted to bring this back to you and give council the opportunity to think about it and get some direction at a future meeting.
I want it to be known that I am a tennis player, or I was, until COVID hit, and I probably would hurt myself if I went out there and ran around right now. But I love the game of tennis, because you can play it well into an older age, and it's one of the few sports that you can. I certainly couldn't play softball anymore, but I am a tennis player. But I have asked staff, I have asked Davy, I've even said to this council, we either need to make repairs to the tennis courts and make them something that are safe and usable for our community, or we need to close down that program altogether. It's certainly not a revenue-generating sport. It is a passive sport, essentially. The condition of the courts right now, they're dangerous. They have cracks in them large enough for a foot to fall, to step down in it, which is a health hazard to those that use them. There's no restroom, so you have to walk all the way around the front of the building to get into the YMCA Recreation Complex to use the restroom. I will be satisfied if we do one of the two. I will not be satisfied if we continue to talk about this over and over and over and over and over again. We have to make a decision on what is it that we want to do with all our assets. We have to keep them up, or we have to get rid of them, because it's wrong to put inadequate facilities out for our community. So with that, everybody else will need to chime in with their opinion at some point in time, but let's don't wait another year to make a decision. Would prefer, as our budget process is beginning, I've told many people that we're going to repair them, we're going to get them fixed, but they're still late, just like they were before. This is a complex item to discuss and move forward with. But I certainly hope that we'll be able to come to some conclusion, and those of us who play tennis will either be thrilled that we're playing in town, or we'll get a membership somewhere else.
I don't want to have cracks, but grass is growing in the park. It's like putting tennis on my front yard.
You know, there are some great courts in the world that are grass courts and clay courts, but ours weren't designed to be played on like that. Lisa, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I was just going to ask, what's the timing of this project, Davy, from the contractors? Do we know how long it will take for the repairs and the construction? And then kind of a part two is the construction that we would do, would that, the courts that will no longer be used, what will we be doing with that until other projects are determined for that area?
I think the timeframe for the construction is a 90-day window from the beginning to end time. And so, you know, again, the companies would prefer to do the installations from springtime to the early fall, and then they shut down for the winter. So, you know, depending on when we decide on how we want to move forward with this, we would have to take into consideration the timeframe of when they would begin that project. Should we close those courts down? I may have missed, I think I missed your second question, where were you asking if we closed the courts, what we would do with them?
The two courts that would no longer be used, if we expanded to the eight, we'll have two not used. How will we make sure they're not played on since they will not deemed, be deemed playable areas anymore?
That's a good question. We would need to remove those courts, and we would just gra, we would cede that location in red grass temporarily for the time being.
And as Mayor said, we're coming up on budget season, so hopefully, this is something that we could address during budget season with an overall parks and rec program. I know that's very fluid right now with COVID and what's been brought before us. But again, we do have many assets that we need to be sure are in safe, usable condition if we'll continue using them.
I agree.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none. We will move to, very important, information discussion number three, town of Fort Mill mask ordinance. Again, Davy, you're our leader on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, the town put out some messaging last week, and based on the new mask ordinance, we just wanted to get some information out of this meeting also for our viewers that watch our public access channel. Again, you adopted a new mask ordinance that took, that was adopted on July the 6th, and it began on July the 8th. It requires the public to wear face covering while inside establishments such as restaurants, grocery stores, convenience stores, commercial retail stores, and service businesses such as salons, barber shops. And face coverings consist of, it's a uniform piece of material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth, such as a medical or cloth mask, bandana, scarf, or gator. We have also been asked about face shields, and according to the ordinance, face shields do qualify as well, as long as they cover the entire nose and mouth section. So those qualify. The ordinance consists of, there are some violations that could be assessed should someone do not, if they don't meet the ordinance. The first offense is actually a warning that would be provided by our police department. The second offense and any offense after that could result in a fine from $25 up to $100. To date, we've not had any, we've not had to issue any citations. The complaints that we've received have been for locations located outside of town limits of Fort Mill. So we've been addressing a lot of phone calls and emails based on areas in the unincorporated area of York County and other cities or municipalities. So for the most part, we've been doing pretty well here in Fort Mill.
Excellent. Thank you. And again, we came to this conclusion when we saw an exponential rise in the numbers, and it was made based on health and safety and well-being in our community. All right. We are now doing information discussion number four, Fort Mill Farmer's Market, an overview of the first weekend with Jacana Hester, our pit planner. Hi, Jacana.
Good evening.
Nice to have you. How'd it go?
Well, it went very well. We had six vendors that included produce, jewelry, elderberry syrup, baked goods, handmade soaps and lotions, and handcrafted syrups. And we've estimated that we had over 400 people come through the market on Saturday. Kona Ice was there, and they were able to give out 170 snow cones for the event, for our grand opening. The vendors were very happy with the turnout for the event, and many of them sold out of all of their products. We had a beautiful day weather-wise and a great location for it in Veterans Park. In the coming weeks, we have six to 12 vendors for each of the Saturdays that are remaining, with more produce coming, meat, spices, some prepackaged meals, coffee, and a couple more artisans. And we got a lot of good feedback from the community thanking us for starting the farmer's market on Facebook, on social media, and at the market on Saturday. Several patrons would come by our tent and just thank us for starting it. It was a good first Saturday for our grand opening.
Wonderful. I also received a great number of compliments. The only request was to please get more vendors, so that if you came later in the morning, you'd have something to choose from. I do think it's important to note, based on mask ordinance and everything, that we planned this venue with social distancing in mind. We were not encouraging a crowd of people. We definitely want everyone to use good practices to keep themselves healthy. But I've heard nothing but really nice compliments to have that available to get the community some of the fresh market items that they've wanted for some time.
I went downstairs for a while and supported Jacana for a while, so.
That's awesome.
I was down there for a little while.
That's awesome. I appreciate staff going through all the efforts to get tents and lay out everything in a manner that we could maintain the social distancing and the safe distancing. So thank you so much for everyone that contributed to the success of our first farmer's market.
And thank you, Jacana, for hanging out in there today. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate all the support, and I think it's going to be a good thing for our community.
And I think Mr. Huntley asked how often, I think it's every Saturday between now and.
Labor Day weekend.
Labor Day weekend. Labor Day weekend. And it's going to be hot this week, guys. So look forward to continued success in that venue, and thank you to all the vendors that participated. We really appreciate them coming out.
Jacana, a quick question. Do we have a list somewhere of the vendors where we can kind of see who's going to be there from one Saturday to next?
Yes, I have not put out a total list, but we do post it on social media on Wednesdays of each week, who will be there for the upcoming Saturday.
Right. With the new website, we'll be able to put it on there as well, correct?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good work. Thanks to all. Mayor, if I may, that was one of the, it's the first weekend, and we heard from every one of the vendors that they're already wanting us to extend this into the fall. We went through Labor Day, and they thought, you know, that everyone loves fall, farmer's markets, so, you know, we will monitor it, and we'll look at maybe doing that if we have a continued presence from our township. I'll also say, for anyone that came out there moving forward, we, I want to remind everyone that the turning lane project is going in, will be taking place starting very soon, within the next few days or so, for the Quaburn Street and White Street interchange there. And so a portion of the parking lot that we have, our gravel lot, will basically be cut in half, because it'll, those crews have to do some work on stormwater in that field and in that parking lot. So there will be a few changes for a brief period of time, but we will advertise plenty of parking in the area, and we will make access to the grassed area where the vendors were much easier than it was this past week. We'll have a dedicated entrance and exit for foot traffic for that event. So we have plenty of space out there. We may have to share for a short period of time through, you know, we'll actually say short period is through early November, but the crews, work crews will have equipment and material out there, but we'll make sure we separate everyone from that and make it a safe and family-friendly event.
And I think it's important to note, we've been waiting on this turn lane in Quaburn for several years now, for several years. So only, if I had known, if we had planned a town event in that venue, that it would hurry or hasten up the actual construction of that, we'd have had one three years ago. But, you know, it's unfortunate, it's not poor planning on our part, it's unfortunate that we don't get to control that schedule. And again, we've been impatiently waiting for several years for that turn lane. So thanks to all for continuing to support the efforts of the town to provide as best we can in these challenging times with a venue to, you know, give us something new to look at.
Oh, the comment I heard from a couple of people was possibly adding some food vendors. And what I noticed too, Davy, from the gravel parking lot to where the vendors were, there's no actual walkway through the bushes, so we need a, there's some kind of walkway through there.
And that's what I was speaking about. We're going to have to remove some of those plants to make an actual walkway. We're going to do, we'll address that this week.
I hope it grows. I hope it just becomes something that the town loves.
It was really neat. I was out there a couple hours Saturday, and it was, it's a really neat experience. And I'm so thankful for Jacana and her effort in this, and all of our staff that has been a part of getting this up and coming and ready to go, and setting up tents and tearing them down. It's just, it's just a great opportunity, especially during the time of COVID. You know, it's a way to get outdoors and get some fresh air and be safe while.
Yeah, I've been asking for a fresh market now for four and a half years, so thank you.
It was really great. I was able to go as well, and it was good to kind of feel normal again. So thank you, staff, for everything you helped in to put that on, so.
And do we have a suggested parking area? We can tell people that are watching now, given all the construction going on, where you would recommend they start?
The gravel lot we have now, they'll still be able to use that lot even after construction begins, but only half of the lot will be usable. But until they begin construction, we're going to use the entire lot. Staff is working with local businesses to acquire permission to use their lots. And as soon as we get that, we'll advertise that.
Okay. Railroad Avenue, you've got some space there, I guess, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Be nice to talk and let us use that little lot across the street, too.
Yeah, it would.
Where the dentist's office and the bank.
Thank you all. It was a very, very, very good first effort. Thank you so much. All right. We now have three items in executive session. Please note, council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. Executive session item number one is a discussion of potential sale of real property. Executive session item number two, discussion of negotiation incident to proposed contractual arrangements. And executive session item number three, receipt of legal advice pertaining to town-owned or controlled property. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into.
Second.
Motion, and Trudy's seconding it. Larry, how do you vote?
I approve.
All right. Jamie?
Approve.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
Lisa?
I approve.
All right.
Approve.
Trudy?
Prove.
Me, yes. All right. Thank you so much. We will return to general session after this, and we appreciate your patience. All right. Okay, we'll need a.
I make a motion that we go back into, out of executive session.
Into regular session.
Into regular session.
All right, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris Moody?
I'm planning on abstaining from voting.
We go back into regular session?
Yes. Go ahead, sorry.
Are you voting yes to go back into regular session?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Moody. Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
And I'll vote to go back into regular session. Lisa, I'm sorry. I was looking at you. Go ahead.
I vote yes.
All right, thank you. We're back in regular session. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session on any of the three items that were on our agenda and were discussed. With that, do you have a?
I'd like to make a motion to have staff explore the renaming of the park and disposition of monuments and the Heritage Act, and in the avenue that town can take.
I have a second to that motion. We've got a second to the motion. All right. Lisa, have you voted?
Approved.
Jamie, how do you vote?
Approved.
Chris Moody, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Mr. Huntley, how do you vote? Trudy, how do you vote? Ronnie, how do you vote?
Approved.
And I also approve. All right. I think I generally wait till everybody else, but I am very excited about the last item I wanted to put on our happy list, and the decision by the State Infrastructure Bank to give us forty-five-plus million dollars for the reconfiguration of the 160 and I-77 interchange is some of the best news that we could have possibly gotten. And I know, good news is getting swallowed up in whole by COVID and everything else that we seem to be going over, but this is great news. A year ago, we were all up in arms about how to find ways to streamline and make travel in Fort Mill better. This is an answer to many, many prayers, yes, this amount of money and move forward on this particular intersection. So I just wanted to say, I'm really happy about that, really excited about it. So with that, Gary, do you have anything to comment for the good of the whole?
Yes, I'm always amazed at how neat our town looks. And the trees will sweep, the home connoisseur, the fresh mow. And it amazes me, they trimmed the curb. So they do a great job.
Jamie, you have anything for the good of the whole?
No, ma'am.
Lisa?
Yes, ma'am, I just want to thank the Fort Knox School District for all the hard work they've put into trying to come up with some options for back-to-school. All of us parents and people in the community, teachers, cafeteria workers, everybody is extremely stressed, anxious, nervous, alike. I know from one minute to the next, I can't make a decision of what I feel is best for our family, and will continue to do so partly to the last minute. And I'm sure I'll continue worrying about the decision I've made after I make it, or as our family makes it. But I do appreciate all the long hours and hard work the staff at the district office and all the teachers and principals are putting into making this unusual situation as professional and as best decisions that they can. And nothing's going to be perfect right now, as, you know, we see with every decision we're making. There's nothing that is perfect, but I praise them, appreciate them, and know that our school district is a true blessing for our children and everybody who has grown up in them. So just want to say, have an extra prayer on your list for every, all the parents as they're making these decisions, and all of the school district staff.
Chris Moody?
No, I'm good. I really enjoyed the farmer's market. I thought it was a good part of getting back to normal some, and staff did a great job. It was very good, so that's about all I have.
Ronnie? Ronnie's good. Trudy? Trudy's good. Trudy's cold. She ready to go home. All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
A little move.
Move and a second over here. Let's do this collectively. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.